Next one?
Okay.
What do you leave?
I dedicate to America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and in this world with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Now we have our first meeting on power lines. And, um, do you have any public participation tonight? Once, three times. We consider the approval of the November 21st, 2017 school committee minutes as written, all with corrections as recommended by the superintendent of schools.
I move that we accept the minutes from November 21st, Ezra.
I have a question on the, uh, when we talked about the athletic code, I'd like to know when we can start, you know, forming a committee might that we can get started on it. Maybe sometime in January?
Um, I thought we already had that.
Well, we haven't really formed anything. We said that we're going to do it, but I don't remember.
Okay. Well, we have it to be agenda on the January meeting and we'll visit that then.
Can we ask interested parties? Can we get something out to see who might be interested in being to participate with that?
How would your proposal do that?
Well, uh, somehow if we could get it out to parents, if any of the teachers are or any of our coaches are.
You know, I've talked to athletic director, coaches, the teachers. I've already done that.
Yes, and there's an interest there. And then maybe through the school, we could ask if there are any parents that would be interested, maybe a note home with them or something.
On being on the subcommittee?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Um, you've talked to coaches and athletic directors and whatnot now already?
Yes, I have mentioned it to them that after, sometime after the holidays.
Yes.
But the other thing I would caution committees get too big, you don't get work done.
That's right. That's right. You know, they get a little out of control with, you know, this one has this agenda and this one has this agenda. So, um, I would like to kind of keep it in the school itself to people like coaches and someone like that because they're working with the kids directly. So they'll see the direct effect of whatever. So, um, I don't really have a problem putting it out to the public, but I'm really kind of worried how big the committee will get.
Yeah, well, we can, I mean, we can probably contain that. Uh, you know, we can pick a number and, but you know, there's a lot of parent involvement in sports and I think that a lot of them have, you know, some good information maybe to offer us. Maybe if we had a couple of-
Do we have a vehicle to offer that out to the parents?
I can. I can have it put on, um, community bulletin board, but I'm just looking now at principal A, one principal coach, A.D., teacher, board member. We're up to five already.
Anything more than that is probably going to be a little too hot to handle as far as getting everyone to work together at the same time and so on like that, so.
What if we created like a forum that they could give suggestions on?
That'd be great to do.
And then we could take their suggestions?
Yeah.
Yeah, that might be a little better. It would be easy to handle that with air instead of, you know, having 10 people on a committee and only three can visit, you know, on a certain day or whatever, so.
Well, we're planning to hopefully start with our PTA too and maybe, you know, a part of that, we can start the forum with parents parental information, gather information.
Throw that out with that program.
Yeah, okay.
So we have a motion on the floor. We have a second on that motion?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor of approving the minutes? Okay. Principals' report.
Very short. So if the first thing on the agenda is something, on my report is something that is already on the agenda, um, calling it right now the parent teacher collaboration. Um, I've talked to teachers who are interested in being part of that parent teacher collaboration. The first date is set for January 4th, 2018 at 6:00 in room 102. That went home in all student report cards. Um, and so from there, I would say whoever shows up, that group will choose its name and set where it wants to go and things that it wants to work on. Um, I would look to Mrs. Streep who was involved in our previous parent teacher and Crystal. Um, if there's anything that you would like to say about how you organized yourselves as a collaboration?
Yeah, it was a very long time ago. I think Kenny Ferguson's grave. But we met and planned fun things for kids to do and we did some fundraising and we planned an entity celebration and fun activities for kids that were, the kids were not in athletics. They had an opportunity to do other things as well, not wasn't just based on sports. But it, and then we had a pretty good group for a number of years and we even did a cookbook. And then parent involvement and the teacher involvement, I'll say, I mean, we went to two teachers most of the time and parents got busy and had more kids and so it kind of fizzled out. But when it was active, it was very active. We had very active parents that were, did a lot for our group. Thank you, Crystal.
Well, that, um, the lady that was here, I can't remember her name, that did the organizational development?
Lee Alley.
Yeah. She was mentioning, it was Jones Porter, Jonesboro, has a wonderful example. And she was going to get us the name or something of how they set theirs up because it's extremely successful and energized and she thought it was a really good collaboration. Just as something-
Right. And it sounds like these two, you've got two right here with the experience that have done that. So I think that's a plus.
And years ago, we didn't call it, I'll tell you why we didn't call it. When you go into a PTO, you have to register with a black organization and things. So we didn't call it PTO years ago.
PTA.
Yeah. We called it something different. We didn't have to jump through the hoops of being nonprofit and all that stuff.
Well, let's on the agenda here later on, so let's, uh-
With this one, uh, you know, like, uh, you know, community members involved.
They weren't, yes.
Okay, yeah. So this is really something like we wanted to start anywhere with the PTA. I mean, as long as we have something, and I know I filled that up about the PTA and all the things that you have to do to get one started. Uh, so even this might, might, you know, we can use this even instead of the PTA.
And like I said, every parent, every report card had that notification in it too. Um, then we'll try to remember. You know, I missed, I missed it already. Should have gone on this notice to send a reminder home to parents. I'll try to get something on the-
No, we'll discuss that eventually when we're back in the agenda.
Proficiency-based, I haven't finished my report.
Yes, I know.
Proficiency-based education. Um, just that Mr. Jones and I went to a two-day workshop with the Main Curriculum Leaders Association and Charlotte School, who is part of our AFAOS, has contacted us and we're going to try to start on Wednesdays, doing something through technology with Charlotte. Timing might be a little the question because we get out of school at different times and whether Mrs. White-Lingley can free up staff, but that's our next goal on that. We are working on fundraising for a 3D printer, which they are so cool. Um, the Perron Law Foundation has proposed that if we can raise money to buy one, they will match it. And they're about $400 and we did the reads, we've had a bake sale. Pajama hat day for kids. I think we're right around $300. So we're almost at that matching fund. So that'll put two more 3D printers in the school. Uh, craft day was a big hit. We had parents, grandparents, community members, people from the bank. We had some high school kids doing community service, come down and work with our students to hit all groups. Thanks. Um, on the 18th, we are doing a behavior attendance and honor roll recognition each trimester. Um, and students receive certificates for that. And just trying to really stress how behavior and attendance goes hand in hand with your grades, that they all work together. We had the Christmas plays. Some of you were there. There must've been, I guess, 200 people probably. The place was packed and it was so cute. And it was done by staff. Um, it really was. They did a really good job.
Kathy Moss recorded that?
It's recorded somewhere, probably about 200 times, but I don't know. I don't know.
Yeah, I ripped it. She had it right.
Yes, yes, it is recorded. Um, on January 12th, I've put out budget sheets to teachers. Those budgets will come to me and then I'll work through them with teachers and then Mr. Johnson, and I know you have budget coming up on your thing. The 15th is Dr. Martin Luther King Day. There is no school. And on the 16th of January, we have a home basketball game at 5:00. And that is my report.
Ready for the school committee? I am not going to give anything out from the school committee.
Well, I just talked to him before you came, Mike, about the school committee and what types of things, because we never have any report. And I asked Mr. Johnson what type of reports or what the school committee's report on. And, uh, I mean, I think that's something that we can look at in this portion of our meeting, even if we want to bring things, you know, to the meeting, if we have things that we can put them in this section right here.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
That's what it's there for. So if any members of the school board have anything on bringing up and so on like that. At one point, we did have, um, a building committee type thing that was set up and it was myself and the, and the oil, I believe. And, uh, that's kind of run astray, so. But yeah, absolutely. If a school board member has something they want to bring up, that's the point for another session.
That's true.
Okay. Superintendent's meeting.
Yes, I've got a few items here this evening. First, I'm pleased, very pleased to appoint Mr. Paul Olson. That's probably my best idea.
Good job.
That will be, uh, that will be a welcome addition and we really look forward to bringing him on board. Uh, I'm happy to report that I have four names as potential facilitators. Uh, at our last meeting, the board indicated their desire to have another facilitator come in. I have four potential names. Um, if we're going to have this activity be what it is that you want it to be, uh, I need a little more feedback as to what exactly we want the facilitator to do. Uh, the four names that I have, all very qualified. They're induced by other school districts. Uh, west of the Penobscot, I reached out to a couple of the superintendents that I know. There are superintendents in Gorham, Bitterford, and Dexter, all who have experience around the state and some of which have rolled through Eastern Maine and now they work in the western part of the state. But I've got four names and, uh, I'm looking for some additional guidance from this board as to what we are looking for more specifically from that facilitator.
Okay, do you have their resumes?
I don't have their resumes yet, but what I can do is, once, uh, once we flesh out what I think he is more specifically, I can contact these people and say, you know, send us your resume. I've got a description here. Of the four, one is a facilitator currently working with the State Department of Education and they're working in Dexter on a consolidation project. I have three other names, two of which are retired superintendents who have gone into the consulting business. One of them, one of whom has worked extensively with the Dorum School Department, becomes very highly recognized by those superintendents. That person has worked with small rural schools, including Daron Stonington most recently. So we have, we have some options. But at this point, like I said, I'm just looking for something a little more specific from our board so I can try to whittle down the field a little bit.
When you say facilitator, I haven't termed that as the professional term. Is that like the human resource development, um, professional?
That's, that's what I typically refer to them as, but yes.
Okay, all right, great. Okay. Do you want us to give us suggestions right now or do you want me-
It doesn't have to be right now, but what I would suggest is, send me your thoughts via email and I'll kind of coalesce them and report back to you in January and I can proceed from there. Does that sound like a reasonable course of action?
Mm-hmm.
So I'm going to put something together and email on what you think we should look at as far as someone coming in from the outside, looking at what's going on in this school to make it function better, make it, you know, more cohesive unit, so.
So this is talking about what we decided to redo for when we was okay?
Yes.
I think if we can somehow, you know, just bridge, there seems to be a gap between some, to me, the community and the school. And if, you know, if we can just bridge that. And I know the school, uh, you, all of them, the staff went, uh, you know, with Ms. Alley and you went through that and I think it's great. And, uh, and I'm glad we're following through with this and for the community.
And I think the other part is going to be the survey we will have to put out here.
Yes.
So as far as to get some information and feedback from the, from the public on what they would like to see happen here at the school. And I think, you know, Stephanie Barak, the idea in the survey month would be kind of a nice way to do that this week here. You know, it's kind of easy to do, you know? You're not standing out in the crowd with people pointing their finger, oh yeah, he said this, he said that. He was in survey.
Yeah, it is. Very, you know, anonymous survey.
I'd honestly like to see something done, not with just the community staff, but something done with the school board members as well.
Mm-hmm.
Because we have to learn, we're talking about bridging the gap, but I feel the biggest problem here is that the, the teachers and the staff are getting put in between us and we need to figure out a way to bridge that gap.
Absolutely.
To stop making our teachers feel like they're being threatened.
Mm-hmm.
So I think the school board members need to have their own efforts or whatever as well.
How do you do that, talk to your quorum?
That's the difficult thing, yeah.
Yeah, how do we, and I'm all for it, but if there's more than a couple of us, then we would never all be able to join at the same time.
School, school board members frequently take training, I guess for lack of a better word. Uh, school board members had the opportunity to take some trainings around the state. Mike and I went to one last spring at the Cross Center in Bangor. And I understand that board members have, you know, nine to five jobs and their availability is sometimes limited. But in this, in this particular case, I wouldn't necessarily be worried about a quorum per se, you know, doing specific Lubec school business, but as board members, you do have the opportunity to take some training, uh, on, on, on that subject.
And we can take it together without an issue.
Okay. I really think that that's something that we should look into. I agree.
Well, it's something, you know, we're a unit. Parents, teachers, students, we're a unit, we're a team. And that's what we need to reach as that goal, we're all together on that.
Right.
The school board, we're all together.
The school board sits, sits here to protect that. And right now, they're not feeling like they're protected, being protected and we have to figure out, we have to learn-
Well, we can have, why can't we have somebody from the main state school board come down, Mr. Johnson, and give us even, uh, some guidelines? I, I think, you know, I feel like we're rusty or not knowledgeable about sometimes what our duties are. And, I mean, they must come to schools at some point.
I can see what I can find.
Yes.
A couple other items in my report this evening. Uh, just to make the board aware, uh, the special education department has called my attention to the fact that we will have a student attending Calis Day Treatment. Uh, and I can't go into details obviously for confidentiality purposes, but just so all of you know, both the special education director and myself have reviewed the budget and we believe that our current budget is adequate to support that. That isn't something we've planned on, but we do believe that the current budget is adequate to, uh, to support that.
Can you remind me of the price of the Calis Day Center?
It varies based on what services are provided.
Try and remember what the last one was. Is it about the same as tuition or is it more?
It can range 35 to 50 for a year, wouldn't be unusual.
Yeah.
And a big portion of that is transportation.
Right.
So, uh, at the moment, like I said, in speaking with our special education director, we believe that your current budget is indeed adequate. Uh, and if that changes, then there's a mechanism for that as well, but at this point, we don't feel that would be necessary. Uh, the last item I have in my report this evening, ABM Mechanicals visited us on December 19th, just a couple of days ago, to review their heating system, our heating system at the school. This was a follow-up to them installing a temperature control sensor valve on the school during the summer months. Uh, their engineer said, hey, give me a call when it's winter and your heating system is running. And, uh, we did that and they followed up and we're here a couple of days ago. Uh, at first, we thought we had an issue with the timer because it was a little cooler during the day than, than we wanted it. And, uh, the gentleman, when he followed up with me, indicated that that was not the problem. He indicated to me that the temperature on the boiler itself was set too low and that the boiler wasn't producing adequate heat in the first place. So he made that adjustment and we're monitoring it. And, uh, he left an, an open invitation to either any Sheldon or Tina or any of us can call directly if we feel there's a problem and they'll, they'll come back down. And they are located right at Bangor, so they can, then are too far away, they can get down here on relatively short notice.
Uh, on the, like, I was down there this week, Mr. Johnson, on Monday, I think. And I was on the high school and, and, I mean, it was totally out, wasn't it, the furnace? Uh, it was blowing cold air.
We, we had Eastern down twice and then ABM came Wednesday.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's all, it's, I mean, you know- Should be all set now.
How much, uh, does a furnace or boiler of that size, how much, what's the cost on that for? You said it's old, old, old. What's the cost on a new one? It sounds like a lot of money.
Boiler itself is only part of the total cost, I'd say.
Yeah.
A boiler of that size would be above $60,000 or more.
So probably the last two months, we put like $10,000 into this furnace. I've seen 9,000 on the-
Well, the boiler, well, we have other heating systems that are in the elementary side too that had attention last year. But the boiler is only part of the problem. The other part of the problem is all the switching and all the, you know, signaling to, you know, get the heat from the boiler to the classroom. And that could be well above $200,000 to replace that. So it's a, it's a big, big number.
Uh, like, I mean, in two months, we've had them on the warrants, what we've put into that, uh, the system. And, I mean, how much do you think you've put in it in the last year, the last two years, Mr. Johnson? And how old is this system?
The, the system is original to the facility.
Yeah.
And that's, that dates to the 15th, I want to say.
Yeah.
When was replacing 75?
Okay, so there are, there are two boilers that serve as different parts of the building. Uh, obviously the one that is, you know, most needed would be the old one. As far as how much have we spent over the last two to five years, I haven't got that figure right in front of me, but there have been expenses on the warrant from Eastern Plumbing and Heating, 2,200, 2,300 in that range. They have been here in keeping our system running. Uh, and in, in, in one of those cases on the warrant, we actually buy our heating oil from Eastern Plumbing as well, so that's included in the warrant also. But, um, this board is going to have to make some strategic decisions in the coming years because, um, putting a valve on, we put, we put that item in the budget, that was a $12,000 item in the budget and we got the job done for around eight. So we, we saved money there. But, uh, that's just in ladies' terms, the tip of the iceberg, but this board is going to be facing some strategic decisions as to how much money they want to put in the infrastructure. And I will be reminding this board when we start to look at our budget, you know, January meeting, February meeting, March meeting, that we need to start thinking about, we need to start thinking about that.
Yeah, I mean, it sounds like a lot of Band-Aid fixing sometimes.
It is right now, yeah.
Yeah.
When Dale Canning from ABM mechanical came out, you know, we went over the whole system and how it works and so he looked at, you know, the big thing is not just the boiler, it's all the switching and all the thermostat controls that, you know, circa 1975. And that's when the whole thing was kind of switched over to, you know, an automatic thing. And that's the big, that's well over $200,000 to switch that, that stuff up. And in that sense, if, it might be, looking at spending that kind of money, it might even be better off to go with different types of heat source, maybe look at a heat pump system, you know, for the school.
Yeah, I feel we, you know, you're right, Mr. Johnson. I feel that we need to start looking into, uh, you know, something, what is that? That's 40, over 40 years old than the other one.
And I know, I know, I've talked to LCOC regarding looking for grants, searching for grants for heat pumps. I haven't talked to Kathy in the past month or so, but they have, uh, put out several grants, like the latest one was back in October on, uh, I think, uh, the number was probably 25 plus heat pumps. To see if we can get, you know, grants on matching plans to do that because that might be the way to go, you know, in the future, put a heat pump system into, you know, each classroom or a dual system to, to service, you know, two rooms. And then eventually, you know, do something with the boilers because number one, one boiler is a steam boiler and the other boiler is a hot water system boiler. So it's two different systems that are there, two different systems, uh, heat, two distinct areas of the buildings. So, uh, that's what we're, so it's, it's something that we're going to probably maybe take a look at this year and put something into, into the budget line this year.
That's all I had of my report for the evening.
Okay. Adjustments to the agenda?
I have one. Uh, I'd like to add, uh, a brief executive session for personnel at the end of the agenda. I was just making that number seven at the end of the agenda for the evening.
Okay. Any old business? New business?
Consider extending the school day in order to make up storm days.
How did that work out last year?
Extremely well. Worked well. I have talked with all teachers who would like to continue to do what we did last year. Um, that requires that Mr. Johnson write a letter to get a waiver from the state and it simply means that we add an hour on to each day. For five days, we'll make up a day. I will say, teachers took that time very seriously, actually did schedules and gained back, you know, three days were spent for math, three days for science, social studies or however it worked out. They gained considerable more academic time than they would either on a Saturday or tacking a day on the end of the year.
And I didn't really hear any complaints from our students either.
Well, the other side, on the, on the parent's side, any, any issues down that?
Is it, is it possible to survey to see what the parents would like?
Well, if I didn't have any complaints, I mean, with all due respect, survey, 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 survey. At some point, can we make decisions and move along?
Well, you know, I, I-
I, I, I actually, I did not enjoy it. I totally disrupted my son for a whole month when one or two days would have sufficed. Me personally, I would not like this to happen, but I can't speak for all the parents, but, um, I didn't know that I really had a choice last year because it was already decided for me. I didn't know there was input.
I'm going to support my staff and say, when I talk to teachers, this is what they like. I had no concerns from parents, none from students. Gained more academic time than I do on a Saturday or on, uh-
Or attendance wise too, if you do it on a Saturday.
They're all there. I'm not, we're not running our buses again. We're not running electricity longer. It's already there.
Honestly, I feel this is what teachers would like best and I'd like to support a teacher from this weekend.
Well, one thing I don't think, and but I'm glad you told us about that, but I just don't, and a lot of those kids, I mean, they're days, you know, when you see kids sitting, uh, standing out on the bus to get, pick the bus up at 6:15 in the morning, especially the younger ones. And I can't see that extra time, how it's going to be conducive to learning for them because-
Here's a first, here's a first grade teacher.
Honestly, it's no different than those kids leaving that classroom and going to the after-school program. How is it any different? And they're at that after-school program until 5:30.
Do you ever go to the after-school program, Jenny? Do you ever go, honey? Do you go to it?
I don't, but it doesn't matter. They're still in school boards, in a school setting.
They're ready for nap when they're, a lot of those little ones are ready for nap.
And they're still there till 5:30. So how is it any different keeping them that extra hour in school than sending them to the after-school program until 5:30? It makes no-
They get an extra snack, we build that in.
Yeah.
Well, we did it last year.
I found that it worked for-
First and second grade classrooms because they are young and they do get tired, but by golly, by the end of the school day, some of them are, we try to do more hands-on cooking and things like that. Still learning math skills and reading skills and if you make it like hands-on, something binded to the final cooking project, they tend to do more practice-based learning than me standing up there, you know, lecturing them. Um, my kids, I thought, handled it fairly well.
Well, you know, you're, I mean, those, those pre-K and K, I mean, I see them in after-school and I'm thinking, by golly, they had a little something to just lay down on for a minute.
Years ago, we had, had start, four-year-olds did take a nap during the day. But I think, I mean, by the time they roll around, I see some energy at the end of the day. I'm telling you right now, God love them. day, I'm telling you right now, God love them. I think it's how we plan for those kids. I mean, we have to plan things that are going to engage them and excite them. And I think that that's happened last year, even some teeming situations. So I think it has potential. I mean, Saturdays, we don't get the numbers, and I honestly don't think, we usually have to be very creative on Saturdays. And it's not academics, usually something like picking up trash or doing this, which is not, it's community-based, it's education to some degree, but if we're trying to get kids to meet, you know, the common core. I, I didn't have a problem with the hour at the end of the day. My kids, like, as a general group, my kids didn't have a problem either. But I didn't, I don't teach K or pre-K, I teach first and second.
So one, one school day off would be one week?
Mm-hmm. And we only did three days, we didn't do five days consecutive days. We did three. We did a Monday, Tuesday, and a Thursday.
I, my own opinion, I don't like how it breaks up the consistency of a study, what your schedule is. And I, and I do support what the teachers and their input and everything, but, and I don't know how the other parents feel, but I didn't like that a whole month of consistency of knowing when school, and on Wednesdays we had this, but then it's like Tuesdays and Thursdays and it's-
Send home a printed-out schedule for everybody.
But I, I really liked the consistency better. That's, that's just my personal opinion.
What's the, what's the states?
I'm a little bit older here, but that's okay.
They, you have several options, but just both. And I've got schools in the district that all do it differently. In Perry, it's understood that if they miss a day, that the audit team is automatically next Saturday, they're in session making it out, and that's a Saturday. In Charlotte, they add it on to the end.
That, that's a point.
In, in Eastport, they have done the extended day thing now for a couple of winters in a row. And they, they seem to like that. It is strictly a local decision. You do have options as a board. If we are going to do the extended day option, however, I do need to write a letter to the commissioner saying, you know, this is our intention, just for approval, because that's a feature of the law that created that option. It's been with us for, for like three years now. You, I mean, you've got the option. You can, you can decide whatever, whatever you want to do. But you obviously have to get to 175.
So as of right now, we've got no school days that have been taken off.
Correct.
Okay.
But we need to prep. And if we wait until January, then it could be February before the letter gets to the commissioner, and then it gets back, and before you know it, we're in March. I mean, I, I would hope that you would support and trust the feedback from the teachers. That's where it came from.
Okay, you have a motion on this?
Well, I'd like to say I do trust the teachers, but then I'm here, I support teachers, but I support the help and, you know, the education of what these kids get in that last hour.
And they're gaining more, I do support the teachers. They're gaining more, as you've heard from a teacher, on these extended days than they have on a Saturday or in June.
If they go on a Saturday, half the kids won't, over half the kids don't show up. We've had that, dealt with that before. They just don't show up. And then, like you said, it's all community service, cleaning, going in, cleaning up trash and stuff, they're not getting any learning. If you go in June, those kids are so tired from being in school that whole time, they're either not going to show up or they're just not going to care. This is, I think this is the option that gives them the option of learning. They're actually going to be able to still do their, the curriculum.
And if they need extra help, they can get the extra help they need in that hour. It's more one-on-one if needs to be.
And no offense to you, Stephanie, but doing the Saturday is still going to interrupt your son's schedule. Doing it in June is still going to interrupt your son's schedule, so either way, his schedule is going to get interrupted.
Not thirty days, it would be one or two days versus thirty days.
But it's still going to get interrupted.
Okay. Do I have a motion on this article, please?
I'd like to move to extend the school day in order to make up some stories.
I second.
All in favor? Would you consider obtaining a quote? All opposed? To consider obtaining a quote for an electrical upgrade on the concession stand in the gymnasium? This is for the booster room.
I can speak on that one.
Absolutely.
Um, I have no idea where this is from. So the electrical really doesn't need to be upgraded. The electrical that's in there is what we've been using for years. We know exactly where to plug things in. The issue is if we have someone bring in a crock pot, we have to unplug our coffee maker or our microwave to plug it in. If we have two crock pots, then we can't plug both crock pots in because they're, the wattage is too much for it. But we really haven't had that issue. The big, if you want to know, the biggest issue in that room is we have no hot water.
Absolutely.
And we need to do our dishes at the end.
This is, this is something that can be fixed, but getting it upgraded.
I think, like I said, the electrical isn't that big a deal, we can work with it, we can do that. But what the room really needs is like a, and we talked about it first year I was on the board, that want to be electrical pumps for like, was it a hundred bucks? Not the electrical pumps, the water heating pumps.
On poles on.
Yeah. That's what needs to be in there because unless the large boiler's on, we get no water. We get no hot water.
And my idea with getting a quote on this is we can eliminate that problem of having multiple crock pots being plugged in, blowing fuses or tripping circuits, and actually establish an outlet for 115-volt hot water heater in there. And I've seen one, Rachel bought one for the-
Lubec Landmarks.
Lubec Landmarks.
Has been going.
Runs on 115 volts and I think it's a seven or eight gallon tank. And it's probably adequate enough what you need down there. It's not a lot of money. And it's not as much as an on-demand, an on-demand system would require 240 volt and then probably upwards around 300 or more dollars. So I'd like to see it and get someone in there to take a look at it, to upgrade that so, and actually maybe put in an additional circuit so we can have that. And I think that's probably something the Booster Club can probably provide ourselves and fund that hot water heater. I don't think it's a lot of money. But at least get someone in there to take care of the situation so you don't have to unplug it. A crock pot will plug the coffee maker in.
That's probably, that's something really unsafe. Well, that's something-
And I know Sheldon also had a memory search. We used to have soda machines, and we don't have those soda machines, so there's plug-in somewhere.
They were, where the concession stand is, on the other side of it, in the little alcove there where we keep the chair rail, that's where the soda machines were always brought.
So they can actually tap those units there and actually take that from there and bring it into the concession stand. That's my idea, that would make it a lot easier for you guys, or the Booster, getting hot water heater, you know, to clean things that have hot water. And someone had mentioned to me that, you know, they have to plug this in and then they have to unplug this because it would blow the circuit if they had both of them on the same time.
Yeah, but it's a little room, so all of those plugins run on, I think, two circuits?
I think there's two circuits, two, two-
One on one, one on one, all the other. And we're running a coffee maker, sometimes the microwave, we've got a crock pot, popcorn maker, and a cash register all on one side. And then the other side is another crock pot and up to two-
It's not a lot of work to take on the circuits from the outside and bring it into that room.
Plus, we get our fridges going.
Can you get quotes on all of this?
That's what I'd like to do is, you know, propose to get a quote from, you know, whether it be, you know, Water Electric or Murphy's Electric, whoever would come in and actually look at it and give us a quote for this, and then, you know, we get the quote, you know, proposed, have the work done.
Do you guys have your own account, Jenny?
Uh, we are, yeah, not through the school. We're not through the school, we're our own organization.
You're independent from the school?
Yeah. But this way here, they can have the funding through their own hot water heater because I know they've talked about that before. But the big thing is to, you know, they can't pay for anything that is on school property to have, you know, a function, functioning, you know, electrical outlet service and something like that. It's something the school has to take care of. So, and I think it's, you know, the Booster Club does a lot for the, for the sports teams here. And they do a lot for the parents that bring their kids in, you know, play sports here. So I think we can get this, something like this is probably very expensive to get done.
I make a motion to table this until I get some quotes and get more information.
Well-
This is just a consideration.
We're looking to get consideration to actually get proposed quotes in here. Nothing will be acted upon, nothing we actually, you know, contracted until we get the quotes and then it'll be brought before the board again.
Does the board or pass, or did they give the boosters permission to use this room? Or did they pay rent? Or how does all that work?
The boosters have been in that room for as long as I can-
When I played sports.
Yeah.
I mean, I was in any of this, and I promised I know how long it's been there.
No, that's just always been the concessions room. And, you know, we keep it locked and we have a key because we have our stuff in there. But the school still uses it for their functions. It's still used during eighth grade graduation, the blow-up balloons, it's still, you know, everything, they can still use that room. So it's not like we have private use of that room.
And so this way here, I can get an electrician between now and the next meeting in January, and then a proposal, you know, ready to go then. And it'll be right before the basketball season starts and something like that. And get something in there so they can get this done and maybe get a hot water heater in there and go from there, so. So I'm looking for a motion to get the approval to get someone in there to take care of it, so.
Well, I make that motion there, to have somebody come in and assess the electrical.
Second.
Second. All in favor? Okay.
I'm going to step back because I'm the head booster.
So you're, you're-
Yes.
Okay. To consider discussion informing a PTO, do you want to call it PTO? PTA?
The work that's been done so far with staff and scheduling meetings at this point is just a PT collaboration until they meet and move however they're going to move.
I, I think that's a better idea, too, because I-
I like the word collaboration.
Yes. I did look into it about, like Anna said, you have to get involved, the main state PTA, and I think if we can do this informal, and people have done it before, and just-
We actually did have people that weren't head, didn't have kids at school anymore, they moved on, and they still remain quite active in the PT collaboration, teacher collaboration. It could be parents, teacher, community collaboration, too, it doesn't have to be, it doesn't have to be just parents and teachers, it can be community members as well. We did have-
Has there been any, let's say, encouragement from the parent's side to do this?
I've talked to some, Mike, and there is an interest, parents that I have talked to. I think, you know, if we started something like this, like Anna said, the last one did, and I think it's another good thing to, for involvement.
The reason I stopped doing it, and Debbie stopped doing it, is because we'd sit there night after night and get, might get one parent come and they were already, their kids were already busy, so it was, it was no longer, we just would sit there night after night waiting for people to come. And I'm not faulting, when I sit here and say this, make it known, I'm not faulting parents, I know parents get busy, so we just finally gave up because there was no interest.
Okay, so something's been sent out on that, right?
Yes. I would welcome it, to be honest with you.
And I'm going to write a note to send a reminder.
Well, may I ask a question?
Because I would like to be involved.
If we form this, if we form this collaboration, are the school board members, there is their parents, there, as parents, there is the community, but if there's more than three of them there, do we have to worry about? And do we have to end, and they still have to be careful what they said back to a parent as there was a question asked about school board, but would they reform if there were more than three school board members participating in the PTC at Ponte?
We go to games, we're at, sitting at games, we're at all kinds of functions and things.
I know, but I don't know, would you be considered there as a school board member? Where, where the school board's starting this? Or would you be going as a community member?
The school board is studying it, though, because it already existed, it just went on hiatus. It's a, that's that high line of-
That's what I'm trying.
I mean, we're so small, our town.
Right.
We do, and we do everything, we all go to the same things and-
I mean, you said you're going as a grandparent, so that takes one out of the-
One or four of us in the IGA at one time, so.
Yes. Hopefully not a good example.
You know the coronavirus, I'll go to meet if I don't, but you know.
It's a good question because there are people that like to get on the SAD hotline and say, the board met in secrecy.
As soon as they saw so many members of the board there, people will be asking questions.
Well, you know, we're doing this for children, and I think that the teachers are interested, we know parents are, and I think it shows the kids that, you know, we're all in this for them. And when I'm there, I won't talk to another board member.
Well, I'm not against it, I'm just trying to cover our butts in all this.
Yeah, we all have a stake in it. We're all, yeah, we all have a personal stake in it.
John, I would suggest that you read the Maine Open Access Act. And I think that probably would give you the answer to your question. And I believe that if you read it, you might want to get legal advice. I'm not a lawyer, I'm not going to give that advice, but I would suggest it maybe to have three members, there would be a problem under the terms of the act.
Everything we do, though, John, we were, there were three of us at the festival participating and being active. There were three of us at a ballgame and we all sat together. I mean, you, you know, this is, and I, I think that's a good idea that we do it.
At those other events, they specifically know we're there as parents, we're there as the committee members of the, of the group. But at a PTC, they might not know that you're there as-
Well, we can say what our goals are.
You might have to state, you're there, you're not here as a school board member, please don't bring that to me.
We'll state what our goals are, I'm sure you guys do, yeah.
Well, in the past, I will tell you, in the, in the, my interest is a group similar, but can be expanded, of, of passive, doing activities for kids. I, I'm hoping that school board business doesn't come into a parent-teacher-community collaboration because if that's the case, it's not based on for kids anymore, it's activities for kids, it's something else, it's political. So I, but I'm hoping that the group, like, before, we had a very specific mission in trying to enrich the kids' activities and things so that kids had more to do. That was the original intent of the other parent-teacher club that we had. So I don't know, I guess it depends on what the group is looking to do. I just assumed that we would be looking to do the same things we did in the past, is to try to get more activities for kids and move kids in, you know, to get things going.
In the IOS, is there another PTO or PTC or?
Parent-teacher collaboratives exist to some degree in all, in all of the other schools. From listening to your conversation, I can tell you that, you know, strictly speaking under the letter of the law, John's intuition is correct. And it is possible to, to think of it, I don't, I don't want you to be handcuffed by a technicality, I'll put it that way. However, if there were concerns that arose over what is the intent of the meeting, what is being discussed, those are legitimate concerns. And an average member of the community, if they're in this meeting and hears issues being discussed, they're going to have some questions. I can obtain more specific guidance for you, but I can, I can say that the first two questions I'm going to be asked if I pick up the phone, I'm going to say, what is the intent of the meeting and what is being discussed? So theoretically, if you had a parent-teacher collaborative meeting with like a two-item agenda, you know, fundraising or buying uniforms or whatever is going to be discussed, and you have officers, and you put yourself up and say, this is, this is the intent of the meeting, here it is. I think, I think it can be done, but I can verify that. And again, there are a lot of small communities in Maine, and I don't think this board's intent is to limit parental involvement because we have parents and grandparents here on this board. I don't think the intent is to limit parental involvement, and I'm, I'm sure that's not the intent. And I think that having a parent-teacher collaborative here in Lubec is a great idea, and I think that, and I, and I support that. But there is, there is a distinction between what I suggested being handcuffed by a technicality or acting in good faith here as a parent-teacher collaborative. This person is a parent, they're a grandparent, they happen to be a board member, but you know what? They want to support their children. So I- So I can get you some more specific guidance. But I think a law will hand John, what is the intent of the meeting? What is being discussed? And if, if we stick to those clearly defined boundaries.
Fair boundaries.
I'm inclined to believe you'll be okay. But before you get too far down the road, what I will do is I can obtain some guidance for you.
Well, I appreciate that because.
I'm optimistic. I think you'll be able to do what you want to do.
I think we, I mean, one thing I see myself is like to, you know, with the parents or the teachers. You know, if I'm, well, how can we help them with our students? You know, what can we do to help them, you know, like study in or have a little tutor or something? But no, I didn't even think about, I can't wait to get on there because I'm a school board member.
I mean, the, I've had similar questions come to me from other board members in other towns. Hey, Mr. Johnson, I've got a lot of groceries and see my friend in the parking lot at, you know, the gas station or something. You know, again, I think if you were clearly, this is the purpose of our organization. This is why we're here. And no, we're not gonna talk about board business. But again, before you get too far down that road, I can obtain more specific guidance.
And then we're gonna have to find out how many people show up because, again, you just sent that letter out. And at times you said there was only one parent that showed up.
But there were times it was like the day we did the cookbook, there was like eight people. So I mean, there was, you know, depending.
Let's see what happens with this. You can get more information on that? No, I can't. Okay. To consider discussion of a school website. Do you have a website?
We do.
Girl, me?
Oh, yeah, we do.
Huh? Who ran the current one that is no longer running at the town?
Ron Fraschay.
Ooh, that explains why it's not running anymore.
Yeah, the last update was 2007.
He moved away.
Yeah. Well, I have been talking to Renee because she does, Renee Gray, the town administrator. And she does the town website. And she built it really easily. And there wasn't a whole lot to it. It just, you know, you just place the things around. You put what you, the information you want in there. But it's what information do you want in that website? Do you want the disclosures, the, you know, the bullying disclosure so that somebody can just click it on? So you have a search through there, look through paperwork that got misplaced or something. You go there, you click on, you see it. And on the town website, they're gonna start, they would have a link to the school website. And they're also gonna do the videos on the town website. She's gonna make a new little button for school board and, or school news or anything if we want.
Which is great, but you're talking about the town website. Where's the school website coming from? That has, I just wanna know about the town website.
It's the same building thing. It's the same, it's WordPress and it's free. And it would, you know what the town website looks like.
Right, so who's gonna do it? Who's gonna build this?
Well, we, we pay an IT guy every week. That's what I'm wondering.
Yeah, I know. But I don't know if we pay the I, if I'm remembering correctly. The IT guy is only here for, um. People will figure out who we're talking about.
Well, Renee's gonna help us in the beginning. She told Stephanie, Renee would help us in the beginning. So, I mean, I looked at Eastports today and they had pretty pictures at Eastport over there and.
That's recently been updated.
And Callis was in the news that one of their junior high students and a teacher created a brand new website. And I looked on it, it had a lot of good information. It had, instead of just relying on Facebook, and most towns do have it. Whether they update them well or not, I've looked at a lot of different ones and some have some really outdated information. But they all have something. And ours is going on 11 years old. And I don't know how you would take that off, but, and start something new. So it'll be a totally different platform than it was way back then. And we don't have access to that. But I was just saying that Renee built the town ones within a day. And it was just simple go through. But, you know, who do we have? Is that something, is that an option that we'd like to do? To provide more information more easy, or we can just rely on Facebook?
No, I'd like to see a specific, you know, the website specific. And like the Tina and the teachers, what would, you know, what would you guys like to see on it?
I would like to see a school website, absolutely.
And I could get your information.
Describe staff and a school calendar.
Exactly.
Calendar, yep, those. School mission, you know, the lunch menu could go on there. The principal's report can go on there.
And it would make more sense if I had our person talk to Renee, if that's the person we're gonna have to build it.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, who else do we have?
I'm getting all my to-do things in.
You have some options.
Do we have anybody else that's IT proficient?
Uh, yes, we do. What about Ms. Morse? Would she be willing?
She would probably be willing to help. I would be careful about how many fingers we get into it. Certain people post stuff so we don't get.
Right, but if.
Things heck on there that aren't correct.
If our technician does not have the time or cannot do it, is it possible that we can ask Ms. Morse?
I would think if, if our technician could talk to Renee and do the nuts and bolts, so to speak, of building it. And then I know Ms. Casey is pretty good with technology and Mrs. Morse is pretty good with technology. Maybe they'd be the ones that updated or something.
We could get it started. If someone could start it, I'm sure that the, there's a couple of teachers that would be willing to help update it.
And this could also, we could actually probably morph something in, since we have upcoming budget. Maybe morph something into a budget where it would be, you know, something like, you know, a coach's pay or something like that, where it would be a.
Like a little stipend, you mean?
Stipend pay for maintaining.
Website administrator.
Website administrator. You know, whether it be, you know, a couple hundred a year or three hundred a year, whatever it might be for the school year. You know, and it might, might take maybe an hour a week to do it.
Because that's one thing I, and that would be, you know, economic development to the town too. Because that's one thing people look for when they think about the town. Oh, and they type in, they can find a website. And they want to know about the school.
If it's a stipend position, it's someone that's already in the building. Someone that's familiar with what's going on in the school, not someone that's, you know, an outside contractor. Someone from another district, that's someone in the building already.
So I'll ask our IT to talk to Renee and then I'll approach those two teachers after vacation to see what their interest is in being ones who help keep it updated.
What do you think about a stipend position? You know, what it might be as far as, you know, to have that, you know, because you'll, I think the important thing is to have that person that maintains.
I dangle that carrot in front of those teachers. Possibility of it could be a stipend.
Could be possibility.
No, Tina, one other thing, do you think like in your middle school? I mean, are there any kids that show an interest in something like this?
Yeah, like Callis. And it became a big news item, seeing they were really involved in it.
Yeah, that's a good idea. I mean, we don't have, you know, like usually the high school kids jump on this, but maybe with our middle school, we've been, not a lot, but.
I'm very interested in what do the teachers want on there and what do, what information do the parents want? And there's, there's a whole, there's a whole lot of ways you can construct a website.
Quite frankly, I'd rather go to a school website and get away from, to Facebook myself.
Yes.
I agree. Little facts of websites.
If we get this website going, can we send a forum home with the mail? So that if they want to put pictures on or something, because we need permission of the parents.
That goes home already. We have those. I think we only have one child.
Okay.
And that needs to be signed and sent. Monthly newsletter, she might like.
She does do a monthly newsletter.
Okay, that's kind of a nice segue into the discussion on survey questions. Because I think that's probably a good survey question to have on there as far as, where do you like to get your information from? Where do you want to get your information from a school website?
Or Facebook or flyers? What is, I would like to know the preference. We don't, I, I know that there, you know, there isn't anybody here and some, they don't voice their opinions of it. But I think it's a very valid question to send out to each one. How do you prefer to get information? I, and we haven't done any surveys. We're not overwhelming anybody. But, and one of the survey questions I would have liked to have been asked, because I didn't even know. I don't want to complain, but I do not prefer extending, I would, the, extending the day last year. And I, and I know we have the input of the parent, or the teachers. Because that's easier, because they're all in the school and you can ask them all. And you're not really gonna catch all the, all the parents and everything. And that's more of an anonymous way. I would have liked that. But other simple things, we should know how they want their information. You know, with this, some parents prefer receiving information different ways. And I assume the website, but maybe Facebook would win out. Maybe they want more information on Facebook.
I don't do Facebook and.
I know. I don't do any, I don't prefer. But a lot of people do get their information on that and it's the community.
The value of websites is that the accurate, the information is often the highest.
Exactly. Exactly. And you're not gonna have an argument on there. You're not gonna have a bunch of opinions. You're gonna state some facts and then they go to Facebook and rebut those facts and have a discussion on there. But that website is clean and clear with just facts. I like that. Yeah.
So on the survey questions, and we had an email go out asking the board members to supplies and questions that they would like to see on the Survey Monkey. Okay, have we, have you done that yet?
Well, I, I have some questions and, I mean, I do. I'm sure we all do. But you can, you know, I mean, I go, I Google everything now. And there was a lot of good, you know, surveys out there that schools have done. And like, who's gonna do ours, Mr. Johnson? Who's gonna, anyway, we've already got somebody that's gonna set this up.
And we have, yeah, and we have to be careful because I think your email came back that said, Survey Monkey has the standard legal questions. Because we have to be careful on the questions and Survey Monkey has the legalities.
Survey Monkey has some canned questions that has already.
They do.
Gone through this.
You can modify it.
You can.
Simple things like how do you prefer your information? And you put it in flyers, Facebook, website. Those are simple questions.
You're right. That, that one I'm sure would, would ask for me. But there are some canned ones on that. We can submit questions of our own, customized, tailored. That's what I was looking for tonight. We can, we can talk about now, or if you want to, just submit them to me. And I can put them all on a master list and kick it back to you before the next meeting. We can go that way. Whatever, whatever we would like to do.
I'm looking at my writing, Mr. Johnson, and I think I should, what I'll do is I type these out to you now. I'll fax them over the first, the week or something.
That'd be great.
Yeah.
And the Survey Monkey is extremely simple. I went on there in 10 minutes. I had 10 questions and the whole survey done to just click and paste into any website or anything. And it could be just simple things about, you know, about a PTO, you know, do you, did you want a forum PTO? And how many are in favor of it? Or how many would, would like to join in on the PTO? Just, just get the rough idea of what is the sentiment. And then, of course, include the teachers also. But I think maybe sometimes we are not getting a full analysis of what parents that don't speak up. Just because they don't speak up doesn't mean they don't have voice. And this might give them an outlet.
Well, they're anonymous. I think that's a good thing. And, I mean, the questions are, you know, very basic. Do you strongly agree, disagree, neutral, da, da, da? But I, I mean, we used to at the hospital and.
Oh, I remember. And most schools do also, a lot of schools. It just shows you, you value opinions, I think. It, it sends out a positive message. We value your opinion. We just want to know what it is.
Okay, can we get these questions by the next meeting nailed down? By this week, we can have this survey go up sometime in January?
Yeah. I mean, if we look at them, Mike, if, you know, he can compose this, all of the questions and we, you know, look at it at the next meeting and get it sent out. Yeah.
Because I'd like to ask, I think that's important. And we can talk about this all year long.
Yeah.
Let's get it done.
Let's get it done.
Right. Discussion on the 2018, 2019's budget.
I had requested that. And I, I mean, I think, but I don't remember. Last year, I think I came on the board in January. But I don't remember of being involved in, you know, getting the budget ready. I just can't even remember. But I know we always used to, the board always used to help in the preparation of the budget. I can remember us in the springtime, maybe after it already started, you know, you guys drafted it and we reviewed drafts. But one thing I was gonna ask Mr. Johnson, like, and this is something from the last budget. I, I got the last copy of the budget for Bobby over in your office. And a lot of the, the items or the different accounts, there's a lot in the black and there were some in the red.
Right.
So those ones in the black, now this was the end of June and your new one starts in July. So the money in all of these accounts, I mean, what, where did, what happens to all that money? Because in June's done and then in July you're starting on your new budget. And so what does, where does all of the money?
Right. What happens is this, any unexpended funds.
Yeah.
Go into what's called your undesignated carryover. And the auditor, who's been in my office, I think the entire team camped out for probably five or six days over a period of two weeks. And we're expecting the audit back, you know, very soon. But what happens is any unexpended funds go into the general fund carryover. And what will happen is we'll get a, we'll get a snapshot from FY17. At the end of FY17, you have this much money in your general fund carryover. And that number is established by the auditor. The difference between undesignedated and designated is key. And I'll use this as an example, could be touched on some subjects this evening where you could designate funds. So when we have undesignedated fund balance, this board could say, we're gonna designate, say $25,000 for heating, infrastructure, repair and replacement. And what, what that would do is it would reserve that amount of money for that purpose. It is possible for this board to designate those funds. If you don't designate it, it just goes into undesignedated carryover. And there is a line in the budget that shows whether or not we use some of that undesignedated carryover for tax relief. If you have money available, you can use undesignedated carryover essentially as revenue to bring down taxation. So theoretically, if your budget is up $20,000, just to use an example. If you use $10,000 to carry over, you can bring that number down from 20 to 10. And that essentially is tax savings to the community. That is a very common usage of the undesignedated fund balance. Other examples of things that have been designated are used, heating system repair, replacement. I've seen towns designate money for roof repair. That's a common one. I've seen towns designate money for bus replacement. That's a common one. But anything, anything that isn't spent goes into the undesignedated carryover and the auditor establishes that amount.
So right now you're waiting for that report.
Right.
And when, when would the board get to see that, that report from June?
I, when I, when I had that report, the auditors were in my office in October and November. I expect to see it. We had it, it was a little bit later last year, but I expect to see it January, February.
And now you and Tina work on our budget, right? You draft, you make the first draft.
Teachers come to, I give teachers a chance.
You get, have their stuff and then I go to him. Okay. So you do that in January or February?
Yeah, January, fall, their budget draft is due to me.
And then you present it, I mean.
With the board.
You were voting February issue. In March, April for the board?
I mean, what, what happens, I mean, I can, I can receive budgetary requests from the board pretty much at any time. If any of you want to see something in the budget, you know, you can send it to me. And I'll put it in a folder that says, you know, Lubec budget in my office. And I'll put it in there. So when we start to put it together, it can appear. But my office starts building in like predictable costs in January and February. And I use this as an example, teacher salaries. We have a teacher contract in place. We know how much teacher A is gonna make and we can start building that cost in. Fuel, oil, electricity, you know, food for the lunch program. These costs are somewhat predictable based on previous year's usage, so we can put, we can start, we can start compiling a budget to put those numbers in, but. Facility improvements, wind if you want to, you know, windows, if you want to do something to the grounds, like we, we're going to put the bid to demolish the aquaculture building, we're going to put that back up, the bid, this board's already made that motion, so that, that's something that will appear in the budget. So those types of requests, I mean, I can feel them, I can feel them at any time. The other thing that I would say is that here in an S A D format, we're required to have three budget workshops per year and typically we piggyback those on a board meeting in the spring and we save our last one for the night before the vote in June. But that's, that's another way for, you know, to, to take input into the budget either from a board member or a community member. But we, we publicize those and we, we're required to have three.
Well, I, I guess I'll pass my piece to you. If maybe even in March that we, you know, have our first introduction to, you, you'll have your draft by then.
I hope so, we probably have it before then, we probably have some time for it.
Yeah, and if, you know, we can review, review it then, because I remember doing it really late.
Once he gets the draft of the budget, it's on every single agenda up until the vote. It's always on.
It's on the agenda, but I feel we need to review it a little bit better.
And we do, every week once he brings it to us and then we have our three meetings.
And I think currently that every board member is getting an updated budget every month.
We're getting those, I'm getting those too.
You're seeing the running lines every month.
But I'd like to be able, us, you know, as a board, to have an opportunity to, I guess review this a little bit closer with our management. You know, I, I feel detached for it and a lot of it I, I just don't know about, quite honestly. I just want to have more knowledge about it.
Before we go into executive session, I should have asked this before, but can, I bring up something different. So we've decided to meet here so that we can have it recorded.
Hmm.
Correct?
It's a bit of a restraint right now.
Right. So the lovely person that is running the camera over there is not getting paid, he's volunteering his time. Is there a way that we can offer him a stipend for doing, coming out on an extra day and doing this?
I think, I think we can, I would need, I would need a little clarification whether or not this is a school or town function, this, this gentleman services, is this school or town?
He volunteers for the select board meetings.
He volunteers for both, but as a school board meeting, this would be a school board one and then I'd say the town ones would be separate.
Okay, so does the town come and see this young man at some festival?
The town does not either.
Okay.
And Quody TV that he is filming for is actually a separate entity from the town. So he is doing this on his personal time just for us.
We could probably, we could probably find a little something.
I'm not saying a lot, I'm saying like maybe $10, I mean, we get $10 a meeting, can he get $10 a meeting?
Yeah, I, I'm fine with that.
I, I may as well put that into a motion here to pay the camera operator, David, $10 per meeting, as long as we're meeting here at the school, at the town office.
I will second that.
Okay, all in favor? So it was.
I had one question too, Mike, and I wish I'd prodded up when we were talking about the last meeting, I, we talked about, we motioned in for the harassment and all of those policies. And I had asked Mr. Johnson which, if we could get, in that one, the harassment one, it had a lot of good contact numbers. And I had seen if we could get a, you know, something made up and chain of command for parents. And so I, I made up one just because I was reviewing that again today.
They went home. Something was written out, they went in with report cards, all that information went home with report cards.
Oh, I showed you. Was it like, this is what I thought would be.
It had all the numbers and the chain of command and everything.
It did? Yeah. I think I don't have a camera, I mean, a student, and I don't get to see these. And I did make some for, this definitely for teachers too. And maybe you could get me a copy of the one that went home. I could get a copy of that.
I didn't go into this federal stuff, I just did.
Well, no, this one was though that were in that harassment and, I mean, we had a policy for teachers and one for students.
No, mine that went home just said, God, how was it worded? Please be reminded of the chain of command if you have a problem. Your child, please see your teacher and if you need further assistance, your principal and your superintendent of the school board. That was all that mine said.
It was simple and cheap one. I appreciated that.
But this one I had, you know, and it's mostly just from those policies, basically.
And this will be another good thing to put on that website once we get it.
Exactly, yeah.
Eastport, that's it.
And everybody else.
Okay. Okay, considering that in the executive session pursuant to statute, citation MSRA SS4056A.